Before we get started, I just would like to tell you that so the public can have access to this video, you are being recorded.
Yes.
Thank you. And I will, okay, starting at this end, just let you know who we are.
Randy Nelson, at-large representative on council.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Trenae Tweedy, at-large representative on council.
Good afternoon, Dr. Tweedy.
Jeff Helgeson, Ward 3.
Mary Jane Dolan, Ward 1.
Hello, Dr. Fleishman.
Beau Wright, at-large.
Thank you, sir.
I'm still on Ward 2.
Yes, sir.
Chris Feraldi, Ward 4. Good to see you again.
My pleasure.
And we have some few questions for you, and again, I'm going to start to my left with Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Fleishman, first of all, thank you for submitting your application and for your desire to serve on the Lynchburg City School Board.
Yes, sir.
For many years, the Lynchburg City School Board has regularly approved the administration's budgets and policies and regulations without materially questioning them. If you were a member of the LCS Board, what would you do to hold the LCS administration professionally accountable to ensure that LCS steadfastly promotes and follows and delivers the promises and policies ingrained in their mission statement, every child by name and by need to graduation?
Until graduation, right.
What would you do?
So, I think first and foremost, it would be incumbent upon me as a member of the school board to make myself aware of and informed of those policies, whether it be academic policies or behavioral policies, discipline or budgetary policies, particularly when it comes time for reviewing the budget and making decisions on what we're going to appropriate where and how. If I'm reading the question correctly or if I'm interpreting the question correctly, I think maybe you're asking, am I going to be someone who's going to rubber stamp everything that comes across me based on what the superintendent and division administration wants? And the simple answer to that is no. I think anyone in a position of leadership, particularly one as important as a school board member in a city of this size, it's extremely important to stay abreast of all policies, all potential changes to policies, and to be good fiscal stewards of the money that our citizens are paying to fund the city and to fund our education. So, it would be one of my top priorities as a member of the school board to make sure I understand fully the implications of what I'm voting on.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Tweed. Thank you. What is your understanding of DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion in the school system? What is your opinion and perspective of it? That's the first question, so go ahead.
Okay, so diversity, equity, and inclusion is a big part of what Lynchburg City Schools attempts to do. And so, in my background, I was formerly a teacher with Lynchburg City Schools. I no longer, I now work for the State Department of Education. But during my time there, diversity and equity was a big focus, and as it should be. It is extremely important that we are looking at the diverse needs of the students within this city, that we are taking the cultural history of this city into account when we're making decisions, and it's of utmost importance that we are demonstrating both in leadership and practice and policy that representation matters and culture matters.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Helgeson.
Thank you. You had mentioned you worked for the State Department of Education, and so I'm sure you read the report or helped prepare the report. That was yesterday, which is quite frankly extremely troubling. You know, to see that kind of learning loss, and that's even before, I think it was through 2019, right? So, it's not the real learning loss that we're going to see, you know, it would, I would shudder to even think what those scores are going to be if we did it now, where schools were closed for the last couple of years for the most part, or lots of in-person, or lots of distance rather, or online. What do you think the next report's going to show?
That's a good question. I think, as you've alluded to, Mr. Helgeson, that the news probably wouldn't be great considering that it would take into account learning loss that occurred during COVID shutdowns. I think that, you know, when schools shuttered when they did, I think that the best decision, the decision was made with the best information that was possible at the time, in my estimation. But that doesn't mean that things retrospectively couldn't have been done differently or shouldn't have been done differently. So, I do think that, you know, while this is good information, I also think that you're right, that we would see further learning loss and further gaps in achievement if it were replicated.
And when we look at that, we have the ability, you know, everybody can be a Monday morning quarterback, but the reality is to really think these things through ahead of time when we make decisions because there's lots of unintended consequences.
Right.
And, you know, many times, things are being made in public policy that are based on maybe false information, maybe information that is maybe correct, but who gets to decide? And we look at this, and I just, I really, you know, we have a motto in Lynchburg, every child by name and by need to graduation, and that didn't happen. I, to me, I think that totally went the opposite because there was lots of kids, lots of teachers, lots of people knew the trouble that this was going to cause. So, what would you different if you were on the school board?
What would I do differently, in what regard?
What would you do different than what they chose, the path that they chose to go down, or would you do the same thing everybody else did?
Well, I think timing is everything, particularly when we were dealing with a situation like COVID. And really, a situation like this had not been seen in public education in really any of our, any of our lifetimes, right? I think the more comparable, I mean, the most recent event would probably be the Spanish Flu, right? I think it, you know, it's hard to say what I would have done, having not been in that position at the time, but I wasn't educated in the classroom at the time. I remember the shutdowns well. I also remember the difficulties of coming back after the shutdown and still having to work through those mitigation plans and still try to teach person to person. But it would be, in moving forward in a similar situation, I know that in-person instruction would be a top priority for me, and doing everything that I could to keep from having to send an entire group or an entire school division to home-based learning would be...
So, who do you think gets to decide? You know, a lot of times, we, it's who, it's not just the decision that's made, but who gets to decide? So, who do you think gets to decide that?
Well, I mean, I guess that depends because the school board doesn't have infinite authority as far as the law goes, of course. I mean, the school board, in regards to the law, has very limited authority to what it actually can and can't decide. So, if there was a situation in which the governor or the legislative body of the state came out and said that we're shuttering schools, there's not a whole lot, in my view, that the school board could do about that other than to advocate against the decision if we didn't believe in it. But if it were a decision, you know, up to the school board, if the school board itself was saying, you know, I think that we need to go into full lockdown mode and go back to in-person learning, that would be something that I would have to take very, very seriously. And I don't think that it's, it's not a decision that I would jump to at all. It would have to be a last resort.
Thank you.
So, what is your vision for improving academic achievement, and what policies could be initiated to do so?
Okay, so that's a multifaceted question, and I think that I could talk the entire 45 minutes on this question alone, so I'll do my best to be brief. You will, if you haven't learned already, I do have a tendency to get a little long-winded, and that's because I am passionate about public education. It's been my career for 15 years now. It has been my life's work, and I am very passionate about it. So, if you feel like I've answered the question or I'm going on too long, feel free to use the buzzer like during a public comment. But if there, there are a few things that I think, there are some challenges that are currently going on, and I think that there are some that are on the horizon that we have yet to realize. And so, one of those issues that I think we've yet to realize is that I think we're going to have some issues with staffing. I think that we are going to see quite a bit of attrition. We're going to see teachers leaving the classroom. Some have already left mid-year, and I think that there's a lot of reasons for that, that we could also talk about at length, but that's going to be an academic challenge, providing qualified staff, qualified teachers to actually hold teaching sessions. I really honestly believe that that's going to be an issue very soon, as in, I think we're going to start seeing those numbers within the next few weeks. So, on one hand, I think it's going to be all hands on deck to make sure that we're adequately staffed for the coming school year. As far as academic policies go, I do think that there are some, some issues with behavior in Lynchburg City Schools that also inform some of the reasons that some teachers are leaving and that they're packing it up. Some are leaving the profession for good, and so I would like to take a look at some of those policies that impact behavior, specifically how we're dealing with behaviors at an administrative level, both in the buildings and at the division level. Because when behaviors are bad enough that teachers are saying, I can't handle this, that's a problem. That's a big problem. And as far as academic offerings, you know, I'm really excited. I attended the, the public session at RS Paint it the other day, in which the city schools was, you know, unveiling the, or hasn't really, it's been unveiled for a while, but they had a work session in which members of the community could work together to sort of look at the data and look at the direction that we're heading for regarding facilities in Lynchburg City Schools. And I was really heartened to see the amount of people who showed up for that, who participated, and there was a lot of wonderful discussion about some of the exciting things that we could potentially do in the next few years. I think first and foremost, we need to take a look at zoning as far as which students are attending what schools. It's my understanding that zoning in Lynchburg City Schools has not been addressed since the court order in 1971 that desegregated our, our public schools. And so, that's an issue. That needs to be addressed. That needs to be looked at. The utilization rates of some of the schools are way down, and I think that we can do a better job about adequately using that space and implementing academic programs within some of these spaces. I would also like to look at reorganizing some of our schools potentially. Maybe, you know, we have an entire school right now dedicated to pre-K, whereas in my mind, as an educator and as someone who now supervises instruction with, from teachers and students from all over the state, I would like to see maybe a reorganization of those schools to potentially pre-K, moving into the schools for which those students are zoned, not all housed at one particular school. And I've talked a lot already, so I'm happy to address that further if you need me to, but I'm going to go ahead and let you get to the next question because I know that there are more.
I will move on to Vice Mayor Wright, and thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
You touched on this, Dr. Fleishman, about retention of staff, specifically with, with regards to the classroom. This is also not unusual to Lynchburg. This is a...
It's a nationwide...
It's a nationwide challenge. There is a, though, I mean, I think there's an astonishing amount of turnover, and not just in the classroom, which is probably the most concerning, but at the administrative levels.
Yeah.
If you had to rank it on a scale of 1 to 10, 1 being you're unconcerned, 10 being I am incredibly deeply concerned, and immediate action needs to be taken to address especially what seem to be some pretty glaring departures, where are you?
An 11. It's extremely concerning, the amount of turnover that we're seeing in the school If it's not addressed immediately, I really believe that we're going to be in a situation in which we don't have adequate supervision in our schools. And if there is not adequate supervision in our schools, then there's no way we can address the academic and behavioral concerns that exist within the school division. So, there has to be a solution, and that's one of the things, if I am appointed to this position, that I would look forward to jumping in and hitting the ground running and working with those members on the school board to try to address it because I, we're seeing it already, but I don't think that we've seen the end of it, and it's only going to get worse before it gets better. And I don't mean to sound alarmist because I'm really, I'm not someone who tends to, to ring the alarm bell very easily or without fair cause, but I think this is going to be a thing. I really do.
To what degree does institutional culture play a role, and how well are we doing?
I think it's huge. I think institutional culture plays a huge role. I mean, if you look at the academic studies surrounding retention and teacher training and what, what keeps educational professional, professionals in the realm of education, salary's up there, but it's not the top. It's, it's feeling valued. It's feeling that you, that your employer, that your place of work values you and that you are making contributions to the workplace, that you have upward momentum, that you have the ability to move forward and to move up if you would so choose to do that. All of those things play a role, and all of that speaks to culture within an organization. So, what is the current culture in Lynchburg City Schools? I would want to take a closer look at that before I'm sitting in a public forum and say exactly that this is the one issue. I don't think it's the one issue, but it, it's a big issue, and it definitely informs the problem. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go so far as to say it's the problem or the only problem because there are other issues that are causing staffing as well. I mean, you know, some of it is pay, some of it is behavior, some of it is a feeling of a lack of support, whether that be from building-level administration or district-level administration. I mean, all of those things play a role.
Or the community potentially.
Or community, I mean, that could be as well. I mean, I won't say no to that without seeing any hard data, you know?
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, again, thank you for volunteering your service for the school board. We really appreciate that. Can you articulate your understanding of the role of a school board member, and also given the current areas where there's so much information attacking the school system as far as usually client enrollment or challenge behavior of students, things of nature, there's so much information out there. As a school board member, how would you change that, and do you understand your role as a school board member?
Sure. Well, I think first and foremost, the role of a member of the school board and the school board as a collective is that we advocate for the education of children, that we advocate for a strong, rigorous academic system that prepares students for what comes next, and that what comes next is going to be different for every individual student, right? So, we also need to be preparing students for multiple avenues of success once they leave high school. And so, whether that's college or career, I do know that we have a, some, some really good career and technical education programs here in Lynchburg City. What I would like to see over the next five to 10 years is a, is an expansion of those programs because not every student is going to go to a four-year college. Not every student needs to go to a four-year college. Career and technical education, career trades, two-year colleges, four-year colleges, the military, those are all valid options, and we need to be making sure that we're giving those as options. But I go, that's the long way of me saying it's, it's our job as a collective to advocate for an education that prepares students for, for career or college readiness, right? What was the second part of your question, Dr. Wilder? I apologize.
As far as so much like negative information coming towards the school board, what would you, how would you address that?
Well, the only way to change a negative perception is to make it a positive perception, right? And so, that takes work. That takes time. That takes a collective effort on the part of the board. And so, I believe that one way that that is done is through being open, being transparent, and hearing the concerns of the community. And, you know, in a public forum, you're going to have people who come to you with concerns. You're going to have people who are sometimes not very happy, and it's incumbent upon whether you're city council or an appointed member of the school board that you hear those concerns as valid as well, and that you're not going to be able to please everyone, you're not going to be able to make a decision that pleases every single person, and you're not always going to be able to do exactly what every person wants you to do. It's, it's impossible to do so. But in having an open and transparent process and in being open to feedback from both at the community meeting level and on an individual level through emails, phone calls, and even a sit-down talk over coffee, that goes a long way to changing those perceptions, and that's one of the, what I believe is one of the big responsibilities of someone who sits on the school board. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright. Thank you for your interest in, in this position. I've asked this question, but I'm going to ask it differently this time because I want to put a finer point on it, just as we've been hearing different responses.
Sure.
I want LCS to be the number-one choice for parents.
Okay.
But unfortunately, it's not. The data does not show that, and folks are not going to the public education system in the city. Partly, I think it's because we're not competitive. Math, history, science, and English need to be prioritized, and to some level, I don't think they are enough. How would you, how would you make LCS more competitive while at the same time prioritizing math, history, science, and education? Math, history, science, and English, forgive me.
Well, I think in order to be competitive, you know, you have to provide something that makes people want to come through the doors, right? You know, in preparation for today and, and just in getting ready, I, you know, I've watched several of, of the local meetings with, with this council about public education and particularly the facility study that was unveiled here, I believe, week before last, it wasn't last week, it was the week before last. And I was heartened, actually, Mr. Feraldi, to see the activity that you've recently had in schools, that you've been meeting with administrators and you've been talking with, with teachers and staff about some of the challenges that we're facing and just, you know, how to make the schools more competitive. And so, we've got to provide an educational program first and foremost that makes parents want to send their students to Lynchburg City Schools, right? And so, I think in doing that, and one of the ways that we can do that is to not reinvent the wheel, right? And what I mean by that is that we focus on, we turn our focus towards those things that are most important. Keep the main thing the main thing. And so, prioritizing math, reading, writing, the sciences, social studies, those kinds of things. And we demonstrate the successes, and we would need to do a very, a good job and a better job, I think, of showing how those programs are being developed and garnering buy-in from the community. And so, I think Lynchburg City Schools historically, I think, has done this well, but it hasn't been advertised well, that community buy-in and parent buy-in is extremely important. And making parents a part of the process, a part of that decision-making process, is going to be pivotal in, in building trust with the community. And so, I know I've personally sat in on interviews with, for different positions within Lynchburg City Schools in which a parent representative or two, or multiple, were a part of that process. I've also known parents to sit on curriculum committees for redefining and approving curriculum. And so, I think in being more transparent about the fact that those things are happening and increasing the amount of opportunities for those things to happen as well goes a long way, or will go a long way. Pardon me.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Fleishman, you mentioned a few minutes ago your appreciation of the career and technical programs in the Lynchburg City Schools.
Yes, sir.
Council often hears from local businesses and the other elements of our community about the drastic absence of skilled vocational and trade employees. They just can't get personnel to fill those jobs.
Sure.
Yesterday, I was in a meeting wherein it was reported that George Washington High School in Danville, very old and proud educational system...
Yeah.
...was auctioning off all of their vocational equipment, their automotive equipment. They were shutting down their shop.
Should we go get it?
But I think it's already been sold because they couldn't find anyone to teach those courses.
Yeah.
And Dr. Tweedy has pointed out, the big reason is schools don't pay what those instructors can make in the commercial business world.
Right.
Given that fact, that's a status of the world, what would you, what innovative ideas do you have to keep our vocational career and trade programs healthy, viable, and productive going forward?
Again, I think it's, it goes back to staffing, right? It's, it's just like you said, this issue with GW Danville is, is concerning because they can't find qualified teachers who want to leave the private sector to come do it for less money, right? And so, I think in those arenas, you have to think outside the box, and in a lot of ways, the Commonwealth of Virginia and the Department of Education, they've gone a long way to provide an avenue for licensure for career changers, okay? And we have some phenomenal skilled tradesmen here in this community who, with a conversation you could go to, perhaps, you know, even one who's retired from a trade or something like that, and say, hey, look, you know, I know that you did this for a long time. Let me talk to you about how we can help you to get a teaching license, to get provisionally licensed, get you in the classroom and help teach some of these kids how to do, do what you've done so well for so many years. So, I mean, looking at situations like that in which, you know, someone is no longer employed but still might like to contribute, finding those people, working with other members of the board and members of the community to bring those people in through that career switcher program, I think would help alleviate some of that staffing. And I think in a situation like career and technical education, where we're specifically looking for someone with a certain skill set, I think that that would work very well. I think the career switcher program for some of the core classes is going to be a little more difficult to staff that way, but for CTE courses, I think it would be a very strong option. Additionally, you know, I've been thinking a lot about if I was appointed to this position, you know, where, where would I like to see Lynchburg City Schools moving? What direction would I like to see it going over the course of my term, which would be three years, right? Or if I serve multiple terms, six or nine? And I would like to see a heightened focus on CTE programs, and I think with the facility study, there are some openings. There are some really exciting, there's some exciting potential to maybe reorganize, and I would like to have the conversation about potentially having a career and technical education school dedicated specifically to students who know that that's the route that they would like to take.
That's refreshing to hear. I do know that some, a couple decades ago, one of our high schools did man their automotive shop with a retired individual. Because he was retired, he had some age to start with, and then he finally aged out, so he, he couldn't do the job anymore, and for, for a period of about two years, that program was, was shuttered, and it's been revitalized since.
It's another concern. You're right. I mean, every solution is going to have its own challenges, right? I mean, there's no perfect answer, particularly when you're looking at a situation like I think we're, we're seeing, which is, you know, staffing is going to be an issue. And so, it's going to take a lot of thinking on our feet, and it's going And so it's going to take a lot of thinking on our feet, and it's going to take a lot of, a lot of work out there in the community and even in conjunction with city council to figure out how we're going to fill these spots.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. I have a long question, so I'll let you know that upfront. And when I looked through your resume, you taught or a teacher of English aid, honors English aid and leadership seminar, and you accepted the position to gain experience at the middle school level in an urban environment. So, one, you have taught in an urban environment and a rural environment. What's the difference between teaching in an urban environment versus a rural environment? That's one part of the question.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the second is, how do these differences affect the behaviors that you have stressed, several answers, the behaviors that teachers are seeing and that sort of thing? And then how do the behaviors that are being seen in classroom instruction, which is causing some teachers not to want to be there, how does that play into the reorganization or the organization of schools? Would it be that you would combine schools to the current schools, driving up classroom sizes? How would you take those three parts and pieces and figure, as a board member, what to do best for students in Lynchburg City Schools?
Well, Dr. Tweedy, you weren't lying, that is a long question.
It's a long question.
Let me, I'm gonna do my best to get to every part of that question. So first and foremost, what I have garnered from teaching both in a rural environment and an urban environment is that a lot of the issues are actually the same, okay? What I have found is that the greatest, the greatest barometer or measure for student success outside of solid instruction in the classroom has historically been the involvement of parents. And when we talk about rural versus urban, the issues exist, the issues that exist in urban environments also exist in rural environments. But urban environments, by the very definition, are more densely populated. And so those, those issues occur exponentially due to higher frequency, right? So poverty is an issue in rural environments. It is a much larger issue, and it impacts instruction to a much larger degree in an urban environment because there are so many more people in the urban environment that are dealing with the issue, okay? And so whereas in a rural environment, we might be dealing with two or three students who are dealing with the, I'll, we'll call it the trauma of poverty in a classroom, any given classroom. In an urban environment, we might be looking at eighty to ninety percent of the class, any given class, is dealing with the trauma of poverty, of lack of appropriate resources, lack of, depending on individual circumstances, lack of electricity at home, lack of water or lack of running water, lack of parental supervision. And so what that means with those students, whether rural or urban, it's that a lot of those responsibilities to nurture and foster a positive environment in which a student can learn and grow falls to the educational professional, right? And I think particularly after COVID, those issues were exacerbated, and it fell even more to the school divisions to try to make up for some of these things that were lacking at home, not because of anybody's particular fault, but because of the nature of what reality for our society is today. And I think that's why some teachers are stepping away, because they have borne the brunt of that in the classroom. And so it's also going to be incumbent upon school leaders to figure out how we can support our teachers in the situation that is really, I think, going to be our new normal for the foreseeable future. And so, you know, I'm going into this, I think, clear-eyed with the challenges, and I am also fully aware that I'm going to be working with a team of other professionals on the board who are experienced on the board and that I'm going to learn from them just as much as I will have from my own professional career. Could you repeat the last part of your question, Dr. Tweedy? I apologize.
Given that these behaviors affect curriculum and instruction, so when you talk about the reorganization of schools, you brought up the 1971 order and where some of our students go to school. So if the order was rescinded or was pulled back and students had to go where they live near in their neighborhoods, it would probably, the enrollment in the physical of those schools and those neighborhoods would go up. So would you recommend increasing class sizes and cramming kids in, or would you be in favor of building a new school if it had to be appropriated funding-wise, planning-wise to accommodate the 71 order, to accommodate increased enrollment in these particular neighborhood schools that have seen less investment in the infrastructure or no footprints expansion of their schools?
Right. And so I think that, you know, increased class sizes is kind of the third rail of public education, right? We, the data and the historical research over time has shown that when students receive individualized instruction or there's a smaller class to teacher, a class size to teacher ratio, student performance increases, okay? So my short answer to that is no, I would not be interested in looking at increasing class sizes. That would be our last resort, okay? What I do think that we can do, particularly as we dig into the numbers and we look at rezoning, is that we can look at those schools that are underutilized or where the space is underutilized and where it's forecasted to be underutilized over the next, say, ten years. We can take a look at that space and see how we could better utilize it. Now, does that mean, like, we expand our career and technical programs? I would like to see that. I think giving some students some choice. I also think that frankly, if I'm going to be completely honest, I think we need to look at expanding our alternative education program as well. Because I think that the alternative education program provides a support and a structure for some students behaviorally that is not evident or not always possible within a normal classroom. And I have seen students who have been consistent behavioral problems in one of our, you know, day-to-day schools go to an alternative education environment and thrive. And so I think that we have to have those conversations, and we need to be very honest with one another, both with city council and the school board and among school board members and with the community at large, that this might be a potential offering and that if we could expand that program, it's not a bad thing to be in an alternative education environment. It's about providing an education in the least restrictive environment for particular students' needs.
Okay, now, understanding the community, because you've worked in Dunbar, and this is my last part of the question, the community has come from the expulsion of students into alternative programs. So into those environments, there was limited space, there was limited education instruction because they were set in front of computers at a time when virtual and computer learning was not popular. So would you be recommending to the community that children go back into that, or would you be recommending that children have the opportunity to have more resources and support given to them in a new and a more modern, alternative option for students who may have some behavior needs or behavior modification needs? How would you appropriate the resources in that instance?
Yes, ma'am, I would want to look at particularly, like, with the facility study, where we're looking at available space. But it's also, you know, it's going to come down to money and what we're able to do and what, where we can be fiscally responsible with the money that's coming in. But I do believe that if we're able to allocate resources to a way that actually benefits the needs of students in an alternative education environment, I don't want it to seem like I'm saying, let's put students in a different school away from the general other, or the other student populations and put them in front of a computer and say, let's forget about it, because there are needs. Behavior is communication. All student behavior is communication. It's communication of some sort of need, right? And providing those services in an alternative education environment has, when done well, has worked well for some students. And so I would advocate, within the means that we have, to be able to provide those services or to try as hard as we can to provide those services in a way that doesn't just throw a student in front of a computer.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That, I appreciate your, lots of your different answers. They're vastly different than what we normally hear, and I appreciate the fact that you're up on the fact of the challenges facing staffing and realization that it's not just pay. Lots of times, that's all we hear. We hear it because that's the easy trump card. Well, the problem is, is because they didn't get paid enough.
Well, it's part of it, but it's not the whole picture.
And the reality of it is the huge problem with regarding safety, with regarding discipline, with regarding disruption and behavior. I think you address a lot of those issues that are really pressing. I'm very familiar with a teacher that got pushed down the stairs at an elementary school and still disabled today. You know, you look at these kind of things and we kind of pat them on the back rather than saying, you know, or let them kind of go away rather than saying, this doesn't embolden the teachers. I mean, this doesn't help them. So I appreciate your comments on there. My question now is with regarding staffing. And so when we look at the staffing ratios in Lynchburg, they base it on how many thousand ADMs, and Lynchburg has some of the highest staffing ratios in the entire state. With that being the case, lots of, school board makes the decision on how we're going to pay. That function, though, can easily be divided. If you have a hundred dollars and you divide it over ten people, that's ten bucks a person. A hundred dollars divided by four people, that's twenty-five dollars a person. School board decides on that. For years, we keep hearing, well, they're underpaid. The school board is the one that can decide that because millions of dollars extra is being given. How would you not just listen to the superintendent, but actually do your own homework to make some of the staffing decisions?
Well, I think a big part of that goes into, like, you know, researching what's going well in other school divisions, how are they doing it? And what's not working so well in other school divisions and talking to other people and, or other, other members of councils, boards of supervisors, school boards to figure out, you know, how have you addressed similar problems? In addition to that, you know, digging into the information I'm provided and also doing, you know, additional research to figure out solutions to problems, you know? I'm very aware that going into this situation, particularly dealing with funding and how we fund different programs and we fund, you know, teachers, particularly with a staffing shortage, that there's going to need probably be some difficult conversations, and there's probably going to also need to be some creativity to figure out how we're going to meet these unique challenges. So it's about asking, asking around and doing your research, yeah? Thank you.
I yield my time to Vice Mayor Ray.
Go ahead, Dr. Wall.
We have about two minutes left.
What role does poverty play in our education system? And as a board member, how about you address that?
I'm sorry, what role does what play?
What role does poverty play?
Poverty play. I mean, you know, it, it's, it's the thing, right? It goes back to Psychology 101. It's Maslow's hierarchy of needs. A student cannot, or not just a student, there's no person, from a psychological perspective, can participate in higher-order functioning, which learning is included in, right? If their basic needs aren't being met, if they don't have access to food, to potable water, if they don't have access to shelter, if there are traumas that are informing a person's, you know, for example, a student with, you know, a father in the hospital on a ventilator is not going to be as academically successful typically, I mean, there are outliers, as a student from a home that's not experiencing some sort of that trauma. And poverty is a trauma. And we have a significant portion of our student population in Lynchburg City Schools that is experiencing that collective, or that, not collective, but that trauma daily. And so the school board is responsible for implementing policies that will help these children, that will provide an academic environment that will help them thrive. So that goes to why we feed students at school. Because, you know, there used to be, once upon a time, students would go to school, they would either bring a lunch with them or they would go home for lunch and have lunch at home, but, well, not every student has that food at home. And so that's why I think the schools, you know, over the last however many decades, have taken on those responsibilities because it is a psychological, I will, I'll call it a fact, that students, that people cannot engage in higher-order thinking processes unless their basic needs are met. So it plays a huge role.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Frum?
I'll be brief. Couple years ago, Richmond, the General Assembly authorized localities and school divisions to entertain collective bargaining agreements with their employees for us would be fire, police, dispatch, trash pickup, folks in City Hall, water resources, and so on. They also authorized school board to make the decision for themselves, for school employees, because they are technically their own body. Would you support or oppose a collective bargaining agreement with Lynchburg City School employees if appointed to the school board?
The short answer to that is oppose, but it's a long, drawn-out answer that I know I've already taken up a lot of time with my answers. So I'm not, as a general rule, flat-out opposed to unions. I think they serve a place. But I'll also add the caveat that, you know, there are places in which unions have amassed an extreme amount of power, too much power, I would say. And that I believe if an organization is valuing its employees, if it's doing the work of adequately compensating and providing adequate benefits and making sure employees are heard and valued, then they're, in a perfect world, in those situations, there should be no need for you.
Thank you, Wal. Did you have something else you wanted to add?
No, no.
Okay, thank you. We're three minutes behind, so, yeah, briefly. Do you have any questions for us? We have a couple more minutes we can take here.
I don't. I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to sit with you today, to talk about my views, and I really appreciate your time. Thanks so much.
Well, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Just really quick, because you've dealt with curriculum and instruction and literature and counseling services, there is a falsehood that a CRT is taught in schools. It has been your experience that CRT is taught in schools, or what is your opinion of the CRT?
Let me very quickly tell you my experience with critical race theory, okay?
You have thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, all right. So I was out in public a year and a half ago, two years, and someone who I knew from the community came up to me and said, you're teaching, you're still teaching, right? And I said, yeah, absolutely. Well, you know you're teaching critical race theory, right? And I said, what? I'd never heard of it. To this day, I mean, that, I had to go look it up and figure, and see what it was. In doing, you know, the research that I've done, I understand that it is evolved from or derived from, I should say, a legal theory, right? And from my perspective, it's come to be sort of this catch-all sort of phrase that has, it's a bucket that holds a lot of different things that it wasn't intentionally meant to hold, right? So, no, I'm not aware of teaching CRT. I didn't know that I was teaching it until I was accused of it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
By way of saying I wasn't teaching it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fleishman, you mentioned the last student assignment redistricting for enrollment. I think they did make a minor adjustment in 1993.
Ninety-three, okay. Well, I was eight years old, so I'm sorry.
It wasn't major, but anyway.
Thank you, and have a great weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Sorry for being so long-winded. Thanks.
Thank you.